Do you see him?
No.
Okay.
Let me go, let me have Alan.
Okay.
He's right there staring at us in the background.
Oh, I see him, okay.
Yeah.
This is only if pulled. Oh, okay.
I told him.
Okay.
Because he's in favor.
Oh, okay.
If you want to speak, we'll have to pull it off.
Okay.
He said, oh, no, 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 only if necessary.
Okay, so this is this, this is first, these. They probably get more than that one's second, and then this is if pulled.
If that doesn't get pulled, then he doesn't.
Okay, got it. Are you ready to go? You guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. Marcy, turn. Hello, is everybody else, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. We'll have a roll call by our city clerk.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, our pledge of allegiance today will be done by Reverend Michael Carr, All Saints Episcopal Church. He's going to do the pledge of allegiance and invocation. So if you'll remain standing after the pledge of allegiance.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the people of Vista, and continue to remind us that we are all here, that we do, remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the member of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing number two will be canceled, so it will not be heard tonight.
And our closed session, City Attorney Joe Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the council met in closed session on item CS1 on today's closed session agenda. No action was taken, there is nothing to be reported.
Okay, I have a presentation, the next thing on our agenda is a certificate of appreciation to our Assistant City Attorney, Martin Pete Grover. So Pete, if you'll come up and I will read that. This is a letter of appreciation for, Pete is retiring after 16 years of service. So it says, Martin Pete Grover, 16 years of service, October 28, 1996 through November 21, 2012. Congratulations to Assistant City Attorney Pete Grover, who is retiring after 16 years of dedicated service to the city of Vista. On October 28, 1996, Pete was hired as a temporary provisional Deputy City Attorney II, and on July 4, 1998, he was hired permanently as Deputy City Attorney II, and on July 3, 1999, Pete was promoted to Assistant City Attorney. During Pete's tenure, he performed many duties, including he prepared all contracts for Proposition L, community projects, participated in streamlining public works, engineering, and community service contracts. He served as counsel to the Planning Commission in 2000 and 2001. He prosecuted nuisance abatement and code compliance cases. He advised our city clerk on requests for public records and was instrumental in the resolution of the French Field litigation. He advised and conferred on Public Arts Commission project, advised the city's cost recovery committee, successfully prosecuted massage ordinance violation and marijuana dispensary cases, and advised on processes and procedures for social host violations, cost recovery, and restitution relating to DUI and graffiti incidents. Pete has received letters of congratulation for his years of service for the city of Vista at five, 10, and 15 years. So the city of Vista offers its sincere appreciation for Pete's dedication and commitment to the city of Vista, and commends him for 16 years of invaluable service to the Vista community, and wishes him well in his retirement and future endeavors. So congratulations to you for that. Would you like to say anything? Would you like to say something? Briefly, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's really been an honor to serve the city of Vista and be part of the team that's really done a lot in the last 16 years, from Vista Village and to the new City Hall and to the Moonlight Amphitheater. It's really been a great time to be part of Vista. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next thing is our consent calendar, and those are things that are enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by requesting or submitting a request to speak card to the clerk or the secretary. And so I have requests here for item C3 and item C7 to be removed. Are there any from the council? Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next item we're going to listen to is item C3.
Mayor, would you like to hear from the speaker first?
Would you like to hear the speaker first? You want to report?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have a report.
No.
Small report?
No.
No? No report?
No report.
No report? I must need, I'm not hearing well tonight, so no report. So I have the speaker, which is Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chuck Rabel here, retired but still concerned Vista citizen and taxpayer. The cash report for the period ending September 30th shows that the investments both by the, held by the city and those by fiscal agents total $197 million. Question being, what's the purpose of us investing at the totally no-return rates on the one hand, and on the other hand, paying bonds at a much higher rate? So on the one hand, we've got assets that aren't drawing interest; on the other hand, we've got obligations that we're paying a much higher interest rate on. Anybody want to?
Dale, would you like to?
Address that?
Yes, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city of Vista. To address the question, what we are allowed to invest in is governed by California Government Code, Section 53601. That section of the government code outlines allowable investments for public agencies within the city of California. There's a number of items, well, I should say, it's a very restrictive code, and for good reason. We are investing the taxpayers' dollars. We can basically invest in federal securities, AAA-rated corporate bonds, nothing over a period of five years. And when you look at today's markets and what's out there with, you know, five-year agencies now, you know, sub .75 percent, we're doing the best we can, but there's not, there's not any items out there that, you know, pay interest in 2%, 3%, 4%, 5% range that we are allowed to invest in because by law they are considered too risky for a city.
And I believe, to answer Mr. Rabel's question, the monies that are contained within that $197 million are, a lot of them are restricted in different types of funds, like the redevelopment fund or sewer fund, so it's not just cash in hand to be able to pay down debt service.
If you say so. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next item pulled was item C7. C7 is our state fiscal year 11 homeland security program grant award, and it looks like Alejandro Sanchez. Is he here? Alejandro?
Yeah. Are we on C7?
We're on C7.
I think that I made a mistake. I wanted to talk on C8, but anyways, I think it's the same item. It covers the grant for FEMA, I believe. And I just found out earlier this morning that the fire department, it's got over $120,000 for radios, which is a good thing. I just wonder what they're going to use with the old ones. It's a lot of money, and it's a very good thing, you know, to ask the government for money, especially coming from FEMA. But on the other hand, I think it's a time for us to question those people. What are they going to do with, you know, any equipment that they're not using? You know, it costs how much? Almost $9,000, you know, per radio? It's a lot of money for a radio, don't you think? 26 radios, if I'm not mistaken? So my question is, if you guys know, what are they going to do with it?
Mayor and council, the radios are a little less than that, but the 800-megahertz system that the Public Safety and Public Works uses to operate on is going to be obsolete within the next three years. And so these radios that we're purchasing at this time with grant funds are what's called P25 compliant, and they'll be able to operate with the new system that'll come onboard within the next two to three years. The existing radios that they have right now will be obsolete at that time. So we will either donate or sell them to an agency that can use them, maybe out of state or out of the country for that matter. But the current radios that we have will be obsolete in two years, and that's why we're trying to get ahead of the ball and purchase these radios now with grant funds so it doesn't affect the city's general fund in two to three years.
Well, as you know, I've been involved with the community for so many years, and I know some people in the community from Vista, that maybe they can get benefit to use them.
Maybe at that point, we can do something about it, but it's going to be.
And by the way, I asked under California Public Record Request for information about, I believe that they've been applying for FEMA grants for the last, what is it, eight years, seven years? And I would like to get specifically records of everything what they've been utilizing this money for. Hopefully, the chief can respond later on to my request. Thank you.
Thank you. We look for a motion to approve that.
I'd like to ask a question.
Oh, sorry.
I have my light on.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes. Those radios, we can sell them. What kind of money can we sell them for? I mean, $10, $100, $1,000?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rick Minnick, Fire Chief. As far as the sales, the grant purchase, those are, it's a regional grant, and what we do with the radios is controlled by the grant. There is some minor market for use, all of these items, when we disperse of them. And there is some minor market for some of the radios.
But at this point in time, it's unknown what the radios would be worth and how many that minor market would need. And so the region as a whole, and I'm not sure what the number is, but it's in the thousands, would be getting rid of the obsolete radios and bringing forward the new radios. So it just depends on what that minor market would pay for them.
Okay. Then would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You already did, I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda tonight is item, hold on, is our first public hearing, D1, is Recreation and Community Services Facility Rental and Program Fees and Facility Rental Policies and Procedures. We will have a report by Dale.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Bill Fortmiller, Assistant Director, Recreation and Community Services. To my right is Donna Myster, our Management Analyst. Also in the audience is Bill Crane, our Senior Services Manager, and Rob Anderson, our Recreation Services Manager. We have in front of you tonight the proposed changes to the fee schedule for the various programs in the Recreation and Community Services Department for the upcoming year. A complete listing of our fees is attached to the resolution. For the most part, we are suggesting to keep our existing fees in place for the upcoming year. At the urgent of the Parks and Recreation Commission, staff looked at the usage patterns for our community centers. What we found is that three of these rooms are underutilized during weekday hours. Our likely target population would be the business community. In an effort to attract use by these groups, staff is proposing to drop our rates by 20% for rentals that end by 3:00 p.m. on weekdays in the Morris Vance, Jim Porter, and Thibodeau Community Rooms. We found the Rancho Buenos Vista Adobe is also underutilized throughout the day and evening, Sundays through Thursdays, and we are proposing to implement a 20-cent reduction to the hourly rate during those days. It's difficult to estimate a dollar amount at this time, but we hope to see an initial 5% to 10% increase in usage as a result of these changes. Cleaning fees will remain at $100 per event, with the exception of the Morris V. Vance Community Room. Currently, the fee there is $125 per event, of which $31 is applied towards cleaning the carpet and the fabric chairs. Due to the excessive wear we've experienced, we're proposing to raise the carpet and chair cleaning fee to $50 per rental, raising the cleaning here for this facility to $144 per event, and adding an estimated $1,000 annually to assist in the maintenance of the facility. In addition, we've added the Civic Center Lobby and Civic Senior Courtyard as rental options. The Civic Center Lobby will be available at the same rate as the Morris V. Vance Community Room. A per-use fee for the courtyard will only be assessed when it must be secured for the purpose of serving alcohol. Staff is also recommending the fees to rent the patio adjacent to the employee lunchroom be lowered to conform to those of the courtyard, a per-use fee, and this ranges from 75 to 165 per event. At the Gloria McClellan Senior Center, we propose adding the kitchen rental option, $25 an hour plus 25 an hour to cover the cost of a staff person to supervise the kitchen's use for nonprofits who require the use of a licensed commercial kitchen for the preparation of a fundraising meal. Staff is also proposing amendments to our facility rental policy and procedures in the following areas. One, we want to allow youth-themed events at the senior centers' azalea room. We have a large demand for youth activities, and the azalea room is underutilized on the weekends. We also want to change the cancellation policy of the Adobe from 90 days to 180 days. This would allow us to rent the Adobe should a wedding cancel 90 days early. When they cancel 90 days, it's difficult to book a wedding. They usually book, you know, longer in advance. And finally, to restrict the use of city-owned and operated vehicles such as our senior center buses solely to city-sponsored events. We've had requests from nonprofit groups to use the buses. We're getting more and more of these, the buses, we need the buses to be available for our senior programs and just to preserve their longevity. This is why we're recommending that. For the senior meal program, we suggest a 25-cent increase from $5 to $5.25 for our contracted meals to the non-Vista senior meal programs such as City of San Marcos, City of Encinitas, and the Salvation Army. This should result in a revenue increase of about $9,700 for our contracted meal program. All of our clients have been agreeable to this increase. We are proposing no changes to the wave or moonlight ticket structure. In both instances, we feel both venues are priced at what the market can bear. In the sports field category, we've added a rate for disc golf tournaments at Ringo Terrace Park. These tournaments eliminate our ability to rent nine individual and group picnic sites. The proposal is to recover revenue loss from those sites as a result of the tournament. Also, to minimize the impact to general park users, we propose limiting the number of tournaments each year to five. We estimate additional 3,000 in revenue from these tournaments. At the Vista Sports Park, we'd like to recover the cost of equipment depreciation for the concession facility by raising the current charge of $15 for weekdays and $30 for weekends to $30 per day. Our daily cost for this facility, utilities, maintenance, and equipment depreciation is about $71. Last year, we recovered just under $6,000 of the $21,300 annual operating cost. With the proposed increase, we'd add an additional $3,700, which is just about equal to the annual depreciation of the equipment. Finally, staff recommends continuing the $30 per player fee for the use of the city's sports fields by city-sanctioned youth groups until such time as the city does not have a structural deficit to the general fund. The current fee generates about $100,000 a year of the $612,000 annual maintenance costs. These funds help offset maintenance costs that will be absorbed by the general fund down the road, such as fences, infrastructure, and an estimated $1 million expense in approximately eight years to replace the synthetic turf at the Vista Sports Park. At the October 23 council meeting, members of the council requested further discussions on the sports field fee and for staff to suggest alternatives. If the council is inclined to change the existing fee schedule, the following alternatives are recommended in priority order. First, review the field rental ski as part of the 2013-14 fiscal year budget discussions, which will take place in the spring. This will allow the city council to analyze the impact of a reduction of the fees in the context of the overall budget. This option would have no impact on the current fiscal year budget. Any impact would be addressed in the fiscal year 2013-14 budget. Second, eliminate the $30 per player fee at the end of the current fiscal year so as not to affect the current revenue estimates and the potential unequal treatment between leagues who have paid the fee this year and those who haven't yet to pay. At the same time, we would recommend the prior fee of $23 per player for competitive leagues be reinstated effective July 1, 2013. This would not have an impact on the current fiscal year, however, there'd be an estimated loss of $89,650 in the next fiscal year. And finally, eliminate the $30 player fee as of January 2013 and reinstate the $23 per player fee for competitive leagues. This would result in a net reduction in revenue of $39,650 for this fiscal year and an estimated loss in revenue of $89,650 for fiscal year 2013-14. That concludes my report, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we have 14 speakers on this, and so I think I'd like to go down the list here and have, get comments from the council before I have 14 speakers. So maybe I'll start here with Steve and go down, all the way down the road.
Thank you, Mayor. I've received a number of emails over the last week or two from individuals that are concerned about this fee, and I've already expressed my concern about the fee. In fact, it voted against it when it was first proposed. So I, for one, believe that, in all fairness to those players out there, option two seems to make sense to me, that we eliminate it at the end of the fiscal year so that everybody that is playing or has been playing pays the fee, and then we just eliminate it at that time. I think most people, most families that involve themselves in competitive sports realize that there's a certain cost to be borne in that, and so the $23 per player fee for the competitive makes sense to me, too. So that's my position. I'd like to hear from other peers on that, too, first.
Okay, John. Councilmember Regula.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I understand the need for public agencies to try to be efficient, generate revenues, but I just, I do have a problem with where we're trying to generate the revenues from. These are children, these are children that are active in our community, children that are doing a positive thing in their activities, and this is really what we're trying to do as a society, is raise these children. And whether it's baseball, soccer, football, whatever the sport is, there's a lot of life lessons for these children to learn. And, you know, I think if we chase away just one child because they can't pay the $30 fee, which many of these organizations are going to have to pass down, I think we're doing a disservice to our children. So I think that we should start January 1, so I support option 3.
Okay, Councilmember Coles.
Well, I remember when this came to us a little over a year ago as a, in the middle of an economic crisis that not only the state and the nation, but we and Vista were facing, and it was not popular or easy then to vote in favor of imposing these fees. I did that, it was a prudent thing to do at that time. Since then, we've noticed an uptick in the outlook on the economy, even our local economy. While we're not out of our structural deficit at this time, we're really headed in the right direction at a faster clip than we thought we would be. And I think it's prudent for staff to try to, you know, be very careful with how they recommend the spending of public money, and I admire their tone and recommendation. But when you break away all the details of this, it's really not enough money to quibble over for the hundreds of kids that can benefit from our parks and the families. It's been hard this last year. I've talked to families who participate, and so I'm going to favor option 3 and dispense with that fee January 1. In conjunction with that, I want to comment while we're talking on this on the increase of very, what I consider, minor, almost non-increase in the concession fee, $30 a day. I think the revenue that can be generated out of the concession stands will more than make up for that slight increase. So I'm only in favor right now of eliminating the $30 per player fee as soon as possible.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. When this came up, I believe it was Steve and I were the ones who were against it. I was totally against any fee at all for this, for this at all. And when they first started, it was like 150, 120, and then it went down to 80, and the past council brought it down to 60, and I fought to say no, no charge at all for these kids, okay? Because you don't want kids out on the street. Right now, with the times they were, the way they were, you're adding $30 to an organization that has difficult times. And I did get an email from North County Football Club that doesn't have a problem with, actually with the fee, because they look at it differently. They said that those fields are good for eight, 10 years, and that doesn't bother them, the fee. And the reason is that in eight years, you're going to have to replace those fields for a million dollars or more, okay? So, but to me, I just don't want to see, so when the voting came, I insist on zero charge. But at that time, the council that was here wanted to charge the kids $60. And then Mr. Gronky came around and said, so they asked me, and I said, I knew I couldn't get it for nothing because of the way this council was. And so I said 15 to 20 that night. But Mr. Gronky came up with 30, which I could, I could go along with that at that time because I didn't want to have the rest of the council get us on $60 for you, for the children. So.
When this came up, I believe it was Steve and I were the ones who were against it. I was totally against any fee at all for this at all. And when they first started, it was like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty, and then it went down to eighty, and then it and the past council brought it down to sixty. And I fought to say no, no charge at all for these kids, okay? Because you don't want kids out on the street. Right now, with the times they were, the way they were, you're adding thirty dollars to an organization that has difficult times. And I did get an email from North County Football Club that doesn't have a problem with actually with the fee because they look at it differently. They said that those fields are good for eight, ten years, and that doesn't bother them, the fee. And the reason is that in eight years, you're going to have to replace those fields for a million dollars or more, okay? So, but to me, I just don't want to see. So when the voting came, I insist on zero charge. But at that time, the council that was here wanted to charge the kids sixty dollars. And then Mr. Gronky came around and said, so they asked me, and I said, I knew I couldn't get it for nothing because of the way this council was. And so I said fifteen to twenty that night. But Mr. Gronky came up with thirty, which I could go along with that at that time because I didn't want to have the rest of the council get us on sixty dollars for the children. So I went along with Steve's decision on thirty dollars, and I have been fighting that ever since. Now, this past election, I mean, this when we were campaigning, most of the candidates said to get rid of the fee. They said to get rid of it, but yet they didn't have any answers on how to pay for it. And the way you pay for it is that you, with the way the economy is moving and the way we are putting money away, we need to put a little every year for the next eight years and so that when the time comes, hopefully, the economy will be much better in the next two or three years, and we will be able to see light at the end of that tunnel. Even though, you know, you say it's good, right, and it's getting better, you know, you've got to be cautious about the economy. Because with all the things that propositions that are going that went through and, you know, more taxes, it gives us less money to spend. So I will, I'm glad this is here, and I'm glad that the speakers here have said number three. And good luck to all of you because that's what's going to happen tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go on the record, I never voted to support this. Mr. Lopez, sounds like he's the sole survivor.
Okay.
Mr. Aguilera, I said the last council. Campbell, when Campbell was here.
Frank, okay, listen, let's move on here. Councilmember Gronky?
Well, after listening to my peers, I'm quite excited at the fact that they're accepting the third option. It was something that I would hope would be eliminated as soon as possible, and that's exactly what three is proposing. So I want to thank you for your support in that.
Okay. And I, and when we put the fee on, the structural deficit was around ten million dollars, but I know the families are struggling and kids are struggling, and so, you know, sales tax looks up, things look a little better, not we're not out of weeds, weeds or woods yet.
Either.
Anyway, so I'm going to support that, and I'll support option number three also. So with that, do you want to, are you ready to hear the speakers? Or do you want, Councilmember Coles, did you want to say something?
I was going to make a motion, but I'll wait. They may want us to rescind our thoughts.
Okay. So I have fifteen speakers, so please, as I call the speakers, please keep your remarks to the three minutes, watch for the yellow light, and wrap it up, okay, everybody? First speaker is Jeremy Butler, followed by Mark Phelan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for your time. Based on what I've just heard, I can probably make my remarks fairly brief. I did, however, want to share some numbers just for your information from our side. I represent Vista Girl Softball, and we've been an institution here in Vista since nineteen eighty-three. We currently play all of our games at the Buena Vista Ballpark. The city provides maintenance for our ballfields pretty much to the extent of the lawn being cut every Thursday for us. Our league provides volunteer service hours for pretty much the remainder of what goes on at our ballfields there with respect to preparing the dirt. We clean up, we repair fences. I know this past year, the Mormon Helping Hands event was a huge help for us in our ballfields. They came, they repaired fences, they painted, they did a huge help to us. But our league also, the parents of our league, provide most of the service hours that go into that. For your information, the thirty dollar fee represents a twenty-three percent increase in our registration cost. When that thirty dollar fee is added to the current upcoming registration, it makes our registration the highest in the region from all around, Penasquidos, Poway, Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, Sando Gito. Just want to put that for your information. When we remove the thirty dollar fee, our registration fee comes in line, sometimes below those in our neighboring cities. We offer opportunities for girls, and this past year, we also offer the opportunity for handicapped boys and girls in our, what we call the Spirit League. Mayor Ritter was able to join us for our opening day when we introduced that this past year. Gives the opportunity for those children with disabilities, both boys and girls, from age five through eighteen, to participate in a league, a league that's based in fun and team atmosphere. They're also responsible to pay this thirty dollar fee, so it goes across the board. I urge you for to continue what I've heard is the recommendation tonight, to vote for option three as our spring recreation season begins just after the first of the year and will allow us to implement minus thirty dollars to our registration fee. Thank you for your time.
I pitched a really bad ball that day.
I think it was a strike, Mayor Ritter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Phelan, and that's followed by Holly Aguilera.
Like my predecessor, my name is Mark Phelan, and I am the current president at Ranch Buena Vista Little League, located at the Optimus Park. Our league uses city fields at Shadow Ridge Park, Madison and Lake Elementary School, as well as we're the largest probably user in the spring at Breeze Hill Park, which we use for practices. Based on the comments from council, I've just crossed out everything I wrote down here that I was going to talk to you about, but I do want to share something that struck a chord when the pastor spoke and opened with a prayer about community. And youth sports, Little League, soccer, girl softball, Pop Warner, that's the core effort of those groups, is community. Most people in this room can remember what two thousand and five meant to the city of Vista when Ranch Buena Vista Little League went to the Little League World Series. It was twelve boys who did something great, but it united us as a community. And even though that happens once in a blue moon, that same kind of excitement and community exists every single week at our Little League baseball field. I'm friends with all our other Little Leagues, several of our soccer people, presidents, and I know the same thing goes on at those parks. And what happened last year with the implementation of that fee was, as I would guess you'd expect, we simply passed it on to our membership. And I, coupled with the economic downturn and that fee, we lost ten to fifteen percent of our players. And there's just no way we could survive. We paid the city of Vista ten thousand dollars last year for fifty days of practice at Breeze Hill Park. We had to do, we had no choice. But I'll stop there with the negative and say I feel good about what I've heard from the council, and Madam Mayor, I appreciate the time to speak here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did Holly just leave?
The first speaker left.
Holly was, oh, the first speaker left it? Did he leave? Oh, okay. It's all hung up on her. Okay, then, oh, Holly, you want me to wait for one more? You okay? Okay.
My apologies, I'm fighting off a cold.
That's okay.
So like Mark said, I'm changing my speech a little bit because I'm in vehement agreement with what you guys have already said, but I wanted to bring up something that actually only affects Vista American Little League. I'm the president, by the way, of Vista American Little League, and we have our home fields at the Vista Sports Park. And so while I appreciate everything you've said, one of the things that kind of got slid under the table was the concession stand fees. And one of the things that was a little disappointing for me is we're currently the only tenant there. There've been a couple of other leagues who have attempted to run the snack bar and haven't been able to for a variety of reasons. It's a big job, but we have been for the last three seasons doing that. And despite being the tenant there, we weren't even notified that the fees were going to be raised. I found it when I pulled the agenda last night. And frankly, the fees are going to go up for us by sixty percent. So I don't know if any of you know that, and I have some copies of some numbers. I don't know if you want to look at them, but I brought them so you could just see what So currently, we pay a fee that runs for the period of time that we sign a use agreement for, and that use agreement is from February of every year until the end of July, and then there's a second period from August until the end of January. And no matter how many days we're open during that six-month period, we're obligated to pay the daily and the weekend rate. On the average over the year, that is about five hundred dollars a month. If these fees pass, it's going to cost us more than eight hundred dollars a month. Okay? That's huge. We're the only tenant there, and no one told us you're going to raise our rent three hundred dollars a month? That just seems a little crazy to me. So what I've done here is, what I've showed you on the second page, is a, for example, for example, if Vista American were to remain and run that snack bar year-round, as we have for the last year and a half, these are the average number of week, not the average, these are the number of weekdays in two thousand and thirteen and the number of weekends at the current rate, the first block, fifteen dollars a day for weekdays and thirty on the weekend. Knowing that we're being charged for all the days we're not open, which includes Sundays we're not open, we're not open any of the time in January or February or July, you get my point? Also, during the weekdays in the winter because there isn't enough kids to support the snack bar. So that nets the city seven thousand thirty-five dollars in fees. If this gets raised, we're not going to be able to stay open because at eight hundred dollars a month, we can't afford that. We won't make any profit, which is what we use to pay for scholarships, equipment, things like that. So the bottom bracket would be if this got passed, we would only be able to afford to be open from March opening day through the first weekend of June, which is closing day. That's four months. Therefore, costing us only three thousand, which would be a net loss to the city of over four thousand dollars. So if we want to talk about the math and saving money, we cannot stay open a whole year at eight hundred dollars a month. We'd have to cut back.
Holly, what were your profits? Just out of curiosity, what were your profits that you make?
We make about fifteen percent, twenty percent.
What is that? What is that?
Well, how much is it?
How much did you make this year?
It's between twelve and fifteen thousand. We also have ten percent in scholarships, which equates to more than six thousand dollars a year. And we also have a per-player cost to our league, which is about three hundred and ten dollars per player, and we charge one hundred and twenty to play. So the revenue in the snack bar, that and sponsorships is the only way that we can raise money.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Holly? Councilmember Lopez, your name is, no? Councilmember Aguilera, do you have questions for Holly?
I don't have any questions for Holly. But I do want to remind you that we talked about this when we discussed this last year, that as we continue to raise fees, whether it's for the players or in this case, the concession stand, you start to lose its economics. The higher you raise the price, the less demand there is going to be for that product. And this is a product, and I understand we're trying to recover fees here, but, you know, as a league, it wouldn't be smart, it's not prudent for them to be open like at this time of the year. There's very few people down there. I mean, so the city's going to lose four thousand dollars. I just don't think that makes a lot of sense.
What about, because I know some of the money goes to replacing the equipment and stuff. What about, do we, maybe we, do you need to use the equipment, or maybe that would be?
Well, maybe we can talk about how that equipment gets replaced. Maybe that's something we can talk about with the league. I know there's a lot of equipment there that they don't use.
I'd just add to that, that, you know, there may be, you know, if the usage is diminished, the revenue to the city's diminished, but also our expenses are significantly diminished with the amount of money that we pay through electricity to run the appliances, to keep the building open for maintenance. So while we may lose four thousand dollars in revenue, we'd save a lot more based on the decrease in expenses that we currently pay to keep everything running through the whole year.
Just the electricity is about thirty-three dollars a day.
May I make one comment to that, which is, we attempted this last year to recognize that it is expensive. We try to whittle all our inventory down to almost nothing because food can't keep over the summer. We consolidated everything into one small little refrigerator. We shut every appliance off, nothing was in use, the air conditioning was turned off. All we had was one half of a freezer and one half of a refrigerator with very little in there, and we're willing to do that, well, we have done it, every single month. We're also willing to sit with staff and go through which pieces of equipment we don't use. There's a, I mean, it's an amazing snack bar, but it's more than most of us can even handle. It's, there's a lot of neat stuff. I mean, there is, but we don't use, you know, half of it, and we're willing to work on that with you guys rather than to just, across the board, raise these fees for us.
Okay, I have other speakers. I have Councilmember Lopez, followed by Councilmember Gronky, followed by Coles.
Can I finish?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, John.
No. My suggestion is that since the league, I mean, basically, my wife and I discovered this as we were going through the agenda ourselves, but since the league has not been notified in advance and there hasn't been discussions with the league, I would suggest that we eliminate this from this vote, at least, and bring this back after staff has had an opportunity to work with the league on how this is going to affect the league and how the league is willing to work with staff and the city in recovering some of these fees.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Mrs. Aguilera, you said you got this yesterday?
I found it on my own yesterday when I was looking at the agenda for the field usage.
Well, Mr. Aguilera had it since Thursday. Didn't he tell you? Come on. Well, I agree with you with the cost of this. Look, you don't need, when they built that, they had non-restaurant people or non-people that understand the food business develop that, and there's equipment there that you just don't use. All you need is a couple of pieces of equipment in there to sell a hot dog and soda. So we need to, you know, how can they actually make any money if it's costing all that money? You know, we need to reduce that. And if you reduce it, it'll be used. Now, when you use it, then that dollar comes back to the city. In the long run, it'll come back instead of it, what you're trying to do is get all this money right away, and it's like being in business, you know? You can't, you can't sell a hot dog for twenty dollars. You sell it for a dollar and a half, you know, you'll sell more of them, and you'll only sell one at twenty for some rich guy. So reduce that price. You're right.
Councilmember Gronky, followed by Councilmember Coles.
You know, when we built this park, it was definitely state-of-the-art park, and as you described, that concession stand, it is amazing. Saying that, I think that probably we want to try to encourage the young people to participate in sports as much as possible. Having read this agenda, I didn't realize you were the only person, only group out there that utilized it. So having heard that, I think I'm in agreement with what you proposed, that we don't increase that fee, that we don't pass that cost along to you because there's so many kids out there that need to play ball. And every time you make more money as the association through whatever kind of, you know, you're going to get money from your concession stand, that's going to go back to your kids. And I think that's a good thing. So if I can contribute to that, I'd be glad to help you out.
One of the other neat things that the snack bar provides, and I'll end, is we have a lot of high school kids who do their community service by working in our snack bar as a volunteer, a lot. And so there's a service right there that can't be dollarized.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Jonathan? Oh, wait.
Don't I get to weigh in on this?
Way in.
Yeah. The, you know, I, the per-player fee that we are proposing to eliminate, to me, fit in a category that affects every child and the whole sports program, the activity part of it. The concession feature, the concession component, is really a little bit of an extra opportunity that we give to the league to earn some extra money, and it fits into a more discretionary category than the per-player fee for participation. And we're not out of a structural deficit yet. I mean, we still have, we still have some debts, and we still have some fairly significant expenses incurred in keeping the concession stand open and powered and the equipment depreciation. But I also think that Holly makes a good point that the impact that they're perhaps making on the concession stand might not be as costly as our fee structure reflects. I mean, if they're not using some of the high-tech equipment, it's not getting worn out, and we shouldn't be making them pay for it. If they're not using as much electricity and power as might be used otherwise, we shouldn't make them pay for that. Maybe we need to come up with a two-tiered structure for use of the concession stand. One would be kind of a dry usage where, you know, they can bring the products to sell and to sell and sell them kind of over the counter as opposed to, uh, utilizing the full features of the ovens and refrigerate, all, all the other things that, that use electricity. And allow them, because concessions are a great way to generate money. It, it's, you have volunteer help, uh, the, the labor cost is low, uh, you're, you're producing a finished product for, uh, fairly, uh, uh, low cost. And if we can allow them to take advantage of, of, of that in, in another way, I, I want to encourage them to do it. So, Bill, is there a way to, I mean, can, can we isolate out some of the, uh, equipment usage or, or somehow provide a, a two-tiered authorization? I don't know if that's even possible.
We can, we can meet with them and...
Maybe we can bring it back.
Yeah. We sit down with them, work with them, that's what we can do.
But I think, you know, for, for a full usage of everything, uh, we, obviously even at this $30 rate, we're not meeting our out-of-pocket costs and we can't, I mean, we're not, uh, running with money. All the money that we have left over, we're eliminating the, the, uh, player fee. So I'd like to look at a way to maybe pare down the costs, uh, that impact us directly and allow them to utilize the, it means a beautiful place and beautiful counters and everything else and to utilize that, uh, without as much out-of-pocket to, to the city. So that, that's what I would propose to do on that.
I agree.
So I, with that in mind, I, I think I would concur with, uh, Councilmember Aguilera's, um, recommendation that we put this, this item off until we can look at that with, with, uh, through another lens.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm glad you're doing that. You know, retired from the food business, uh, last Friday, uh, down on, at 721 South Santa Fe, where my business used to be, I used to have my business, we have a patio in there. And in that patio, North County Football Club, and this is an idea for, for you, you members out there, the, the adults who are helping these organizations, uh, I, I cooked a dinner for these kids. They pre-sold tickets for $10 a ticket. They made $3,000. The food costs $450. They made money and they made that money so that they could go to their tournaments. Now, you have to go out and also sell and find people in the community that can help you because it's, that's the only way right now. You gotta hustle out there. And, uh, to, uh, to come back with this, I think it's, it's, it's great because last time it was way, way out of line. So I'm glad it's coming back. Thank you.
Councilmember Gronky.
You know, I just want to have a final word on this. When we built this park and as we develop every park and every opportunity for our young people, it's a good thing for our community, for the young people, participate in, in these types of events. And I think as a city, which deals with hundreds of millions of dollars, when you start gouging people for $6,000 or $5,000, I, I don't think there's an argument there. I think there's such a, such a benefit to our community from this. I don't think we need to argue these minutias. So, um, I, I, I understand you want to bring this back. I won't be here for that discussion. I'm, just want to tell you, you know, that really, think about the entire community when you make these kind of decisions, when there's just these minor amounts of money involved and such a major, and, and we, and you're going to deal with hundreds of millions of dollars and probably billions of dollars, you know, if you stay on this council long enough. So just keep that in mind.
Okay, we've now done three speakers out of 15. So I will start through. Please keep your remarks to three minutes if you could, so. Okay, so the next is Jonathan Cuomo, uh, and followed by, oh dear, let me see, I can't read this one. Pablo Manas? Manas?
Thank you very much for letting me speak here. I'm not speaking on behalf of any organization but myself as being part of this community for over 48 years. Uh, I moved here when I was two years old, 1964, and, um, I have seen a lot. I am speaking on not statistics, not money, not whether you, what you've done is right or wrong, but from the experience of knowledge that I've been through, uh, in this county. I have coached, managed, and was on the board of a little league for 17 years. I've seen what it takes to run and manage. I've seen the fees. I've seen parents struggle. What amazes me is the fact that I think that any amount of money being borne to players is not a good thing. I think that, uh, as one of the councilmembers said, it's a small amount of money. And that's kids need the ability to continue being active. I've had three children go through Little League in the 17 years, rec soccer, and now one doing competitive. And when our coach says to us, "Well, we're not going to play until February because there's too many fees." So now all these children are sitting at home doing nothing. They can get into trouble and they're not doing anything with their minds. The other thing is, is, is it amazes me that we should look at it another way. Why have fees at all? Because that money that, that is being presented to us to pay, we're giving back to the city anyways. We're stopping at the gas station, we're stopping at the local grocery store, we're stopping at the restaurant. And then, and in turn, we're paying taxes. And in fact, we're paying a higher sales tax than our neighboring city. So that $30 or that $500 a month is nothing. We have coaches and managers who put in hundreds of hours that equate to more money than what we're talking about. We have parents donating time and dollars. We have businesses donating a lot of money. So again, any fees that you put on what should be something we should pride ourselves in as a city, it should be just as important as education because these children are learning just as much on the field with these coaches and managers and learning life lessons. So as one who does a lot of community service for this community...
I need you to wrap up, Jonathan.
Yeah. As one who does a lot of community service for this community, I think that overall we shouldn't have any fees when it comes to youth sports. Thanks.
Thank you. Pablo Manas, followed by Frank Lopez. Are you going to speak again on this?
No, because, uh...
Okay. Followed by Cliff Kaiser. Pablo, yeah?
Good evening, uh, mayor and city councils. My name is Pablo Jimenez. I'm, I'm chairman of T-Soc nonprofit organization. Um, almost the speakers, they lost my, my words, definitely. You see what they say. So I changed my, I will change my speaking, my speak right now. Just to let you know, we have involved children from the five-years-old through, uh, 14-years-old, right now playing, thanks God, uh, 60, 92 childrens. And, uh, unfortunately, with all the fees coming, next year we will lose around 300, uh, teenagers between the age of 15 to 17. What does mean this age? These, these ages are more problems for our city and they will cost more money for our city for sure, for sure. Because they will be enrolled in drugs and gangs and all that stuff. So right now we keep all the childrens be, entertaining with us and playing football soccer, which is our, our mission and vision, to, to see the kids coming and, and play with us. And, uh, with the, with the fees which are to the end, we cover the insurance, we cover the, the, the uniforms, we cover almost everything. So we cover, you know, uh, uh, parks and, and, and feeds and all that stuff. Anyways, so, so I was, um, encourage you to see you can take a little bit about this issue because right now we can save a couple hundred dollars, but I promise you in the future, in two years, no more than three years probably, on the end to the next, next, uh, uh, city mayor, city mayors and, and the next, uh, mayor, will, will cost to us hundreds and hundreds thousand dollars on, on these problems. Right now we pay a year, a hun- over a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year for our nonprofit to the city of Vista. It's a lot of money, believe me. A lot, a lot of money. It's over $10,000 a month. And we play only in, obviously in, um, Luz Duran Park and also in, in, um, uh, the new park, uh, well, the sports park. So, so I believe I understand it's not possible at this time because we are in very bad shape. You know, we're crossing the whole United States with very bad numbers and decreases, but, uh, to, you know, to, to say, okay, free for everybody, but, you know, be smart. And I believe if you move the numbers, you will find the correct, the correct places for us and, 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 and I heard all my, the speakers, you know, we, we, we will cut in our, our, close our organization on the end, on the middle, March, May, next year. So that's what I say. Thank you and, and God bless to us.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to ask him a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the name of your organization?
T-Soc.
What is it?
T-Soc. Tiffany's International Soccer Organization.
How long have you been in Vista?
Living in Vista?
No.
Oh, 22, uh, we are...
What is it?
Tiffany's.
Oh, it's Tiffany's. Okay.
Tiffany's, correct.
Okay, good enough.
Eight, eight years and under 501(c)(3). You want to see my, all my records right here?
No, no, I just wanted to know how long, the name, I couldn't understand the name.
I'm sorry. My, my, my English is, is Latino, it's Spanish, I'm sorry. Spanish English.
Otra vez habla mi español.
Gracias, muy amable.
Adios.
Cliff Kaiser, followed by Chuck Rabel.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, I, I am very encouraged by your comments about reducing these, or eliminating these $30 fees. I, I would like to make a couple of comments. Um, this is really, uh, an investment in the youth of Vista. And I, I try to think of a term that's the opposite of investment because if these youth are not playing, uh, in sports and being involved in the community, then they do worse things. So it's kind of like they're taken away from their community if they're not doing this. Uh, and this investment is no different than the investment that you guys make every year in the Moonlight, the AVO, the Wave, and the Fourth of July Celebration. It's a, it's a community investment. I would, uh, I also like to, uh, uh, point out that Bill Fortmuler, Chuck Chris, Rob Anderson, they're great people to work with. And our leagues work with these guys on a regular basis to improve the fields, improve the parks that we work in. Um, and we have more projects that we're going on to make it not only better for the girls in Vista Girls Softball, but also better for the community, make it a better park. The Parks and Rec Commission met a couple of weeks ago on this very issue and somebody else pointed out that, uh, there was no notification that this issue was on the agenda and I don't think there was any notification that it was on this agenda. Uh, I think that's a systemic issue that needs to be addressed. Somehow the stakeholders of these, uh, leagues or whatever the issue is need to be notified that these issues are coming up on the agenda. Um, you are very well aware that I've disagreed with your spending priorities in the past. This is one of them and again, I'm encouraged that you're, uh, considering to eliminate this. Last year Vista Girls Softball lost $17,000 out of their pocket because of the fees and because of a canceled tournament and the associated, uh, revenues that come to the local businesses. Uh, that's a big hit. Now is the time for you guys to correct mistakes made in the past. I encourage you to eliminate these fees immediately. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Chuck Rabel, followed by Ted Cole.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask him a question.
Mr. Lopez? You must ask Mr. Kaiser a question.
Oh, forgive me.
Sorry.
Regardless of how it goes with the, with your campaign and the others that, you know, have not made it, I hope you continue to not only with the fees and the sports park, but also look and fight for the young boys who do not have a skateboard park in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rabel, felt...
Uh, yeah, folks.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Councilmember Gronky.
Whoops. I have a question of staff.
Sorry.
I, I obviously have heard about this over the last couple of weeks from individuals. How did the notification go out on this particular item? Because this is kind of a controversial item and I imagine all the sports associations should have been notified of this.
Mr. Fortmuler? We did not notify, the groups were not notified of this as an item, my understanding.
I think Mr. Kaiser has a, a valid point, um, that this, this, this is a fee that, that all them bear and they really should have been well notified of this coming out. So I, in the future, I just recommend, recommend we do that.
I agree and, and if we were proposing to raise the fee for the per-player fee, I think that, that notification and, um, at least, uh, forums like we had done in the past would have taken place, but because staff wasn't recommending increasing the fee or removing the fee, um, the groups weren't notified. But in the, in the future, we'll take that consideration, we'll notify the groups whenever there's a, the fee schedule goes before, uh, city council.
Concession stand was being raised, right?
That's correct.
The concession stand fees were being raised.
Yeah, I was just referencing the per-player fee though, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Rabel.
Welcome again. Uh, just to put things in perspective, let's go back to October 23rd meeting right here, uh, item D2, fourth quarter financial report, where it was reported that the, uh, general fund expenditures came in 12.6% under budget.
Are you, are you talking on D2? Because we have your...
I'm talking about D2 of 23 October.
Oh, okay, because you have D2 that you wanted to speak on.
Anyway, the, the general fund ended up $3.7 million, uh, to the good. And the Prop L reserves were $7.4 million to the good. Uh, question being, we're talking about peanuts here compared to these numbers, absolute peanuts. And, uh, the Prop L was supposed to, there was a promise for a replacement for the skateboard park. Those kids didn't get to vote for Prop L. These kids didn't get to vote for Prop L, but for 25 more years, they're going to pay an extra half a cent sales tax. Uh, let's build a skate park now. The, uh, Boys and Girls Club are, are aboard. Get the thing done. All you have to do is appropriate the money. Uh, the other thing I'd like to mention is that we talk about depreciation for the synthetic turf and for the stuff in the equipment room, that typically that's part of enterprise accounting. Maybe we could get a better feel for the real cost, not what staff comes up with, uh, which we don't, don't ask questions about. We, it's a given, that's the cost. And, uh, maybe if we went to enterprise accounting on, on some of these, uh, items, including the Wave Water Park, which I, or, uh, the Wave is already there, but the Moonlight is not. Uh, I, I got to close quick, uh, but when you look at, uh, the group rates, uh, resident, youth and senior groups, uh, city of Vista recognized programs, they, they don't pay very much. The nonprofits pay more. Uh, family groups, general public, they pay more. And of course, anybody that makes a profit, uh, pays a lot more. In the case of the Civic Center, we're talking about the community room, $77 if you're city-sponsored. If you're in it to make a profit, $270. It, it should be based on cost, cost and cost recovery, but you need to get a handle on what the real costs are.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel.
My light's red and, uh, so is my face. Thank you.
Uh, Ted Cole, Ted Cole, followed by Alejandro Sanchez.
Could I just ask a question pertaining to that? I, I don't recall, but was there anything on Prop L about a skateboard park? Was there anything on that ballot measure that addressed a skateboard park? I keep hearing that and I'm not sure if I missed something or not.
No, there was, there was nothing formally, uh, to replace a skateboard park.
I mean, in the language that I voted on... I mean, in the language that I voted on, I didn't remember anything about a skateboard park. And I just want to make sure I'm...
I mean, obviously, the skateboard park was removed from this facility to build the building, but there was nothing in the language on the skateboard park.
That's, that's all I wanted to know. And, okay, that's it.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. To clarify again, Mr. Cole, you guys weren't, you gentlemen were not here. We put, we put half a million dollars aside for a skateboard park. And we promised this to these kids. And none of these council people stand up to the word that they give to these kids. This is my last council meeting, but I'm going to tell you, I'm going to come back every week when they have a council meeting, and I'm going to remind them until they build the skateboard park for these kids. I was raised, when you give a promise to someone, you keep your promise. Obviously, it's not kept here. We need to build that skateboard park for the kids now and get going with it.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
You're quite welcome.
Mr. Cole.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and council members. Like all the previous speakers, I had come prepared with facts and figures, and it just pleases me to no end to recognize that the council is, is moving in a direction that we all were hoping you would. In fact, it exceeded my expectations, and I'm just truly grateful. And in representing the Vista Soccer Club, we'd like to thank you as a family. I'm just going to take a couple of quick moments then, just to thank Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Gronky for having been there for not only the kids and the community, but for the city over the years of your service. And I want to say to you that you are giving the best gift in this last party meeting that you could ever deliver for the community. So, thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the City Council, all of your years that you were up here. Stop that, Ted. Okay, Alejandro Sanchez, followed by Tiffany Kaiser.
Well, I heard Holly tonight. She was not notified about what you guys planning to do today? Classical. I heard Mr. Cole's very good educator. I'm telling you one thing, you're going out in the next two years. I hope that somebody take your place, and they say with the word to build the park for these skateboard fellas. It's an embarrassment, you know, that I give it 24 hours. Patrick Johnson just tried to wash her hands. His hands so smooth. Cannot get rid of this problem. We have a problem. Let's face it. Not even the local detainers give you 24 hours? Come on. How do you serve the community? At least in the last 12, 15 years that I've been coming before you, you have not served the community very well, in my opinion. I was the president of Tiffany's Club, yes. It's a nonprofit organization. How do you help this nonprofit with, they're serving hundreds of poor kids? If it wasn't because somebody getting involved and pushed the council, you would not do anything to help them. But now, increasing the fees once again, people is leaving. How do you help the community? How do you help those kids? Shame on one educator, superintendent, former superintendent, who knows what's going on here? Thirteen schools we have sanctioned it, and the NCLB shaming you. And you know what's going to happen with all these kids in our community if they don't have no place, because that's true.
Alejandro?
Many of them, they cannot afford the fees.
Alejandro, will you skip to the, stay on the subject maybe of the, of the fees?
You've been around for too long. It's the same thing for you. You know, I'm sorry, but, you know, if you're going to consider this, this thing tonight...
We're not, we're not...
Okay, that's fine, but you have two more new members that are going to come.
But we're not raising the fees, Alejandro.
Let's table the matter for another meeting, but not, don't take the decision today. Let's table it for another meeting because, okay, we're going to do something here and something there. Let's be fair. And just table the matter for another meeting. Twenty-four hours? Come on, give me a break.
Okay, Tiffany Kaiser, followed by Tony Donahue.
Mayor, council members. My name is Tiffany Kaiser, and I have been playing with Vista's soft, girls softball for four years and enjoy it very much. It helps me stay fit, learn teamwork, and live skills, and have fun. I have made lots of friends, and my parents have made friends with other parents in the VGS community, which have, which has made a positive influence. VGS ate the new sport fees this past year, but cannot do it again. Those fees cost sixty extra dollars just for me. I would like for other girls whose families cannot afford the extra fees to be able to play softball. I am so happy to hear you will stop charge us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming. Tony Donahue followed by Donald Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. You know, I've just come as a small business owner in Vista and a concerned father of five daughters who all play sports.
Wow.
It costs us an awful lot. So I'm really pleased to hear the direction that the council is leaning. So I don't want to keep you any longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, five daughters, wow.
I'm going to make a motion that we vote, actually.
Okay, Donald, Donald Coleman, followed by Frankie Matos.
Again, my name is Donald Coleman, and I'm representing the Vista Soccer Club. I'm not going to be long. I want to thank you for your support and the number of scholarship families that we actually have, over 300 scholarship families that were able to do that, because we ate the cost last year and we were unable to do it again. So again, thank you for your support, and I'm going to yield my time back to the council.
Thank you. Frankie Matos followed by Tyson Allen.
Thank you, City Council. I want to thank you for not raising the fee because we have a lot of kids who like baseball and, like, Coach John is our coach. So we still want to play baseball, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Frankie.
Tyson Allen. Now, how, yeah, you got to beat that.
I got to feed them dinner still. So, again, thank you, Mayor, and council members. I want to also remind you guys, when you talk about what things cost and depreciation and stuff, what the city would lose if we're not down at that sports park? I'm one of the volunteers that take care of the field, drag the field, take the trash out, pick the trash out, make sure the snack bar people are getting stuff. Every Monday, when we're not there on Sunday, something's broke. Fields are damaged, gates are broke, fences are bent in, trash cans are overflowing, and that's just because we're not there one day. Imagine the times where we're not there. The last time when we stopped being there in June to when I went back in August, every gate handle was broke at that park. The grass had divots out there from dogs digging holes, people playing football out there. Many times, the fences are caved in from damage of it. Our sheds that we store equipment in have been tried to have been broken in. All this because you don't have somebody down there. And if you raise the snack, the snack bar fees, right now, when it's cold, we don't make any money. We just open it as a convenience to a couple of parents that want hot chocolate. But it's a safety thing. It's a security thing, that if I'm down there or any volunteer can see people doing something on the field that they're not supposed to take care of it, we can call the city. Ryan has been called many a times. He's a wonderful man that comes right down and responds to us. And just, hey, they're down here kicking a football and digging divots in a baseball field. They're down there swinging on that. That won't happen if we can't open the snack bar, because nobody's going to see this go on. And depreciation is a lot more than just equipment in the snack bar. It's your whole field, it's your community. And I'm also part of Vista Soccer, and you have tournaments that come in there. People travel. When they see how beautiful that place is, they love it. But when they come in there and they're day and there's no baseball down there taking care of the trash, nobody wants to be down there if they're from La Jolla and they see trash everywhere. People just out there doing things they shouldn't be doing on field. There's bicycles out there. I find tread marks from people taking motorcycles out there on the infield, using the mound as a jump. That's not what you want for your city sports park to be seeing. And that happens because we're not there. So take into consideration that that's a lot more of a cost than just a few dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers. So then, Councilmember Cole, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
If it's, are you calling for a motion?
Yes, I love a motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we, we adopt this with the option three to eliminate the thirty dollar fee beginning January one, so that the teams can plan their coming seasons appropriately, and to bring back the item on the concession stands with maybe some other options for, for cost.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion and a second.
Can I speak?
Councilmember Aguilera, yes.
I'm going to, I obviously support this, as you all know. But because of my involvement in the league, I will abstain, but I'm only abstaining for legal reasons.
Okay. So please cast your votes. The motion passes. With one abstention. Next thing on our agenda is item D two, our fiscal year 2012 first quarter financial report. Just a second, just, just a second. Oh, that's right, one. Okay, we're ready now, you think?
Sure.
Okay, we're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Once again, my name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the City of Vista. Presented to you this evening is the first quarter financial report for the three months ended September 30th, 2012. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations. Exhibit three on page 10 of the staff report provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of September 30th. As of September 30th, the general fund has received about thirteen point eight percent of its total budgeted resources. I'd like to point out that the first three months of the fiscal year are generally kind of light months for revenue, as there are certain large revenue items that we typically don't receive until later in the fiscal year, such as property tax. We don't get our first big disbursement of that till December. Our triple flip sales tax comes to us in January and May, and one of our largest franchise fee payers, SD Genie, doesn't pay that till April each year. Also, a number of revenue items that we actually receive the cash in July get accrued back to the prior fiscal year because that's the, the period which they relate to. Exhibit five on page 16 of the staff report presents similar information for general fund expend, excuse me, general fund expenditures. These are at about fifteen point two percent of the total appropriated amount for the fiscal year. There are a number of recommended budget changes at this time. Detailed discussion on each one of those changes can be found on exhibit two of the staff report. That is on page eight. The resolutions to make these budget adjustment changes can be found on exhibits nine and 10 of the staff report. It's been relatively a quiet quarter, so there's not too many exciting things to talk about at this point. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, any, Councilmember Gronky.
Not so much a question, it was just a comment. You know, when I look on page 10 of 25, and I look at the TOT, the two new hotels that we brought in within the last couple of years have been very, very beneficial to our city. And I can recall years ago when there was quite a controversy over us bringing a cement plant in, in the Satteridge area, that I don't think even touched on how much money that these brought in. So this is the types of things that I'd like to see our city continue to pursue. They're positive for the city. They're positive both in, in the image of the city and also in the financial bottom line for the city, too. So, just a suggestion.
Councilmember Lopez.
Along with the TOT, there's also developer impact fees that are, that are, were good for this community. Along with that, there's also property taxes for a building like that that is worth millions. Millions at one percent is a lot of money, correct?
That's a correct statement, yes.
Okay. Did they pay their impact fees?
What, the, the hotels that went in?
Yes.
I'm sure they did.
Oh, well...
I mean, I don't personally know that sitting there, but...
Both hotels that were recently constructed paid developer impact fees.
Yeah. Well, if everyone, if all businesses paid their impact fees, we'd be in pretty good shape, correct?
I believe all businesses, new businesses doing construction or improvements do pay their impact fees. Thank you. Sure.
Any, anyone else have any? No, boys. I, oh, I have one speaker, Chuck, Chuck Rabel. Thank you. I forgot it.
Hello again. I'll be quick. Mr. Nielsen, in the past, we've always had a director of finance. We haven't had a director of finance for three years now?
About two years.
Pretty close to two years.
Is there reason, other cities have director of finance and we don't have one?
As a cost-cutting measure, we eliminated the position two years ago.
So be it. We're doing well. And the money's going to come in, and then we're going to have another surplus at the end of the year, I'm sure. But I'll let that be as it may. Thank you for your time.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I say something on that?
Yes, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, you know, we don't need a direct, what's he called it? Director of what finances?
Director of finance, yes.
This is my last meeting here, and I'm going to tell you that I've been here eight years, and you've done one heck of a job. Every time I wanted to know something, you were there for me, made it easier for me. And I think you've done a great job, and I think you're, you're in the right position for this community. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. With that, I would look for a motion for approval.
I move for approval.
I can second that.
Cast your votes. Mr. Lopez?
Hit it.
Hit it again. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The last thing on our agenda is our public hearing. So I'd like to open a public hearing for North Melrose Apartments, Zephyr Partners, and have a report from Mr. Conley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Conley, Community Development Director. The project that you have before you this evening is a request for a number of entitlements associated with the development project along North Melrose Drive. They include a general plan amendment from industrial general to mixed use, a specific plan amendment to remove the project site from specific plan number eight, a zone change to rezone the site to mixed use with a density of 30 units to the acre, a site development plan for 407 apartment units, and a tentative parcel map to consolidate the lots. And I'll go through each of those briefly. The site's located along North Melrose Drive. It's directly south of the North County Transit District Railway and west of Melrose Drive. The city boundary extends along the western and northern property limits, City of Ocean Sites to the north, City of Vista's to the south. Surrounding land uses include the North County Transit District Station to the north, Lee's Iron to the west, and the Little League baseball fields that are under construction, or renovation, I should say. Storage and industrial uses to the south and east, and Maryland Elementary further to the south off of North Avenue. Access to the site is via a panhandle on North Avenue as well as access along Melrose Drive, direct street frontage. Little history on the site, the site was graded in about 2001, 2002, when it was mass graded by the... graded by the owner, and there were some detention basins created on the property in the western portion, and a drainage along the northern portion, which were improved at that time, and there was a pad created on the site. Subsequent to that, Calvary Chapel processed a site development plan and a special use permit to build a church and school on the site with an industrial building. The site's been held up in those entitlements for a number of years, and now those entitlements have expired, so the new applicant is requesting the land use changes before you this evening. The general plan amendment, as I mentioned, would rezone the site, I'm sorry, redesignate the site from industrial general to mixed use. The mapping shows the project site under the current designation, which is in light blue, and the proposed designation in purple of mixed use. The specific plan amendment is shown in the proposed condition, where the site's cut out of the specific plan and the industrial uses would apply to the areas that are highlighted. The proposed zoning would also change to mixed use designation at thirty units to the acre, which is shown in blue on the right side. The site development plan proposes four hundred and seven apartment units and eleven buildings. I believe there's thirty-seven units in each building, seven hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces, which includes a combination of garage and open spaces, a number of amenities, including a pool and spa. They're arranged in a grid-like pattern as shown on the flat pad of the site. This is a landscape plan that shows landscaping throughout the property, primarily around the buildings and along the driveways and the perimeter of the site. Also notes that the existing detention basin along the western boundary and the drainage area along the northern boundary are in open space conservation easements, and so those are regulated under existing permits and aren't touched by the project. And finally, there's a tentative parcel map which consolidates the three parcels on the site into one, which is shown as parcel B on the exhibit, and revises the western property boundary with Lee's metal because of an existing encroachment. The grading plan shows the northern portion of the property. There would be some retaining walls constructed along the western and northern boundaries, and about thirty-five thousand cubic yards of fill would be brought into the site to create the pad. The green areas show the existing conserved areas that I mentioned previously, and access would be at a signalized intersection along North Melrose Drive. This would be the primary access to the project, and the signal would go in with the development at the cost of the developer. At the southerly end of the project, they would have access to North Avenue via panhandle driveway, and there would be a number of retaining walls constructed along the back portion of the property that are shown in red, with access, drivable access that would be gated at North Avenue. There would be thirty-seven units per building, and the eleven buildings include a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. The mix is shown there. All the three-bedroom townhomes would have two-car garages, and there would be eight single garage spaces in each building for the, some of the one- and two-bedroom units. These are floor plans for the one and two bedrooms. They range from seven hundred and fifty-four to nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet for a one-bedroom, and a little over a thousand square feet to twelve hundred, twelve hundred forty-one square feet for a two-bedroom. And this is the three-bedroom townhome unit, which would be seventeen hundred and ninety-four square feet, and all of the three-bedroom townhome units would have a garage on the ground floor that would have direct access to the unit. Architectural elevations are shown here. There's two architectural elevations, which I'll toggle between. It's primarily a Mediterranean theme with some tower accents, tile roofs, stone accent along the bottom of both designs. The color accents are slightly varied, but the, the design of the buildings in terms of the footprint are identical. They would be in a U shape with a courtyard in the middle, garage access along the driveways. This shows an elevation of the pool building and the pool area, which would be the front amenities you come in off of Melrose Drive, the main access portion, which is in a similar Mediterranean architectural style. The clubhouse would include gymnasium, fitness center, and there would also be a totlot, barbecue area, volleyball court, and a dog run as amenities within the project. The mixed-use standards for parking are shown here. The project requires seven hundred and thirty-seven spaces. They provide that exact amount with a hundred and seventy-six covered spaces and five hundred and forty-six open spaces. Issues that the staff considered with the general plan amendment and zone change, because this is a land use change to the general plan, it is at the discretion of the council. When we were preparing our update to our general plan and our land use community identity element, this site was kept as industrial general because at the time, Calvary Chapel had an entitlement on the property and a use permit, and we assumed they were going to develop the site. After that fell through, the developers approached the city to request the consideration of the land use change, and the staff's primarily supporting it based on the fact that it's adjacent to the Sprinter, and it's consistent with smart growth policies that are promulgated by Sandag in the region for developing high-density housing near transit opportunities. The project also meets the city's design standards for project amenities and architectural design that we've recently adopted for apartment projects, preserves sensitive areas, and uses low-impact development standards for stormwater, and, and they've addressed all of our access considerations to, to make sure that the site's compatible with surrounding uses. The one consideration for this site is that it would redesignate a property that's currently zoned for industrial, commercial use to a residential use, so there would be a loss of that future opportunity. As far as the development code standards, the project meets all of the requirements for parking, open space, setbacks, and landscaping, and as I mentioned, has dual points of access on North Melrose and North Avenue. There was a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the project that was circulated for public review. There were a number of impacts and mitigation measures included in, in that document for the areas of traffic, noise, biology, cultural resources. Also received a letter from the school district with concerns initially regarding impacts to the district's facilities. The staff has responded to all of those comments, and the applicant has come to an agreement with the district, and so all of those issues have been addressed at this point. Finally, the planning commission reviewed the project. They're required by the code to review and make a formal recommendation to the council on October sixteenth of this year. They recommended a minor change in one of the floor plans to ensure that a one-bedroom unit isn't later converted into a two-bedroom or used as a two-bedroom, and those changes have been made by the applicant and are shown on the plans that were presented to the council. And with that, the planning commission recommended approval six oh, with one commissioner absent. In closing, the staff's recommending approval of the project, which would include the mitigated negative declaration, a general plan amendment, an ordinance approving a specific plan amendment and zone change, and adoption of a site development plan and tentative parcel map. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I have speakers. You want to hear the speakers first? Okay, well, Brad, is it Termini? He's with Zephyr Partners, followed by John Alswee.
My name is Brad Termini. I'm with Zephyr Partners, and just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions, and also wanted to thank John Conley and your staff for doing an excellent job in helping us try to advance this project over the last year. It's very rare that we work with a staff that does exactly what they say they're gonna do, on time, and that we can really rely on, and we've enjoyed a good relationship with their staff over the last year, and I look forward to advancing the project tonight, and we're here to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
From the time you looked at the property to this point, how much time do you have in it?
I would, probably about fifteen months.
Fifteen months?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you get the approval tonight, how long before you actually start doing any work?
We hope to have a grading permit, April, May of next year.
April, May of next year?
We're gonna excel, you know, we want to go as quick as we possibly can. We get approval tonight, we advance grading, grading plans, building plans, and, you know, hopefully, beginning of second quarter next year, we should have a permit and ready to start work.
In, in the past, we've had a lot of projects come in, and we approve them, next thing you know, they're gone. You're gonna do the job?
We are going to get the job done. I mean, I think John can attest, we've been very schedule-oriented in trying to get things approved and processed. We have a financial partner in tow to capitalize the project, and really, our, our biggest hurdle is here tonight, getting approval from the city council. We are eager and ready to advance the project as quickly as we can.
I was here during the planning commission, I came to listen to this one, because that's, that's right on the edge of our community, and I was down at, I went down to look at a project down in La Mesa that was right next to the rail, and I'm telling you, a project like this, next to a rail, is, really enhances or helps the price of a, of a bill, a project like that, because it's right next to it. The rail is about, it's actually the trolley, which is about a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet away from it, something like that, and I'm telling you, those units are one hundred percent filled all the time, because they're, because it's, it's, it's perfect with, with the trolley right next to it. Along with that, there was some other small businesses around it. Is there any, any future in that little area to put any more commercial, Mr. Conley?
On this project site you're referring to?
Well, that or any others around.
There are some other, there are some other small sites in the area that are still zoned industrial, commercial. As far as this site goes, this project would eliminate the opportunity for any commercial on the property.
Yeah. Well, I also heard that, that some folks were, were, you know, saying, hey, you know, you're, you're putting housing, you're, you're getting rid of our industrial and, and all that, and when you look at that project, you get on Oceanside Boulevard, you get on Melrose, and you look over there, a project like that is really gonna help that area. You look at your map, but you, you can put the map back, and you can see where across the street, there's more land. Keep going. Okay, right there. If you look at where the project is, then where the, Melrose goes, then, then you look straight up to the right, you have another bare land. That is Vista's, correct?
No, that's actually in Oceanside.
Oceanside, on the other side of the, the...
Referring to this area here, if I'm looking at the screen up above.
Oh, let me see. Yeah, right there.
That's Oceanside. This is the city boundary here, the orange line.
That's too bad, you know, because, you know, that would, that would have been a heck of a project, right there. Well, that's too bad. But in, 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 in driving down Melrose and driving down Oceanside Boulevard, I look, you look over, and your project is really gonna look nice there, and listening to the planning commission, they, they did a pretty good job that night going through the different things, and I'll tell you right now, I'm in favor for your project, okay? And get it done right away.
We appreciate your support.
Sure.
To your point on the La Mesa project, I agree with your, your assessment of what a great project that's been. One of our roles, we hired the same architect.
Oh, you did?
Is that La Mesa project is here tonight.
I mean, there's about five or seven hundred units there, something like that. It's fantastic for that city. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Very beautiful project, very nice. I'm a little disappointed in that we do have to give up some industrial space, but that's here and there, I guess, at this point. I was hoping that we could get some mixed use, because that's what we're actually zoning for, right? Mixed use? But I noticed in your project, you don't have any inclusion of mixed use. I was hoping we could do something near the Sprinter, you know, whether it's some sort of restaurant, dry cleaner, whatever. I mean, I'm not looking for the entire project to be mixed use, but I was looking for maybe just a strip that was next to the, to the Sprinter station there, and I didn't see that, obviously, in the project, so I'm a little disappointed in that. I do have some concerns as I looked into this a little bit further. North Avenue, we're not looking at widening that at all in this, with this...
North Avenue is currently the segment between Maryland and Melrose is on our CIP for widening. We do have a project to widen that, and this applicant is required to provide a fair share contribution for that.
So, when will that happen?
The project's in design right now. We're hoping, depending on availability of funding, within the next two years, we can get the widening done.
So, we're looking at widening, and also, I think there's a vision issue, too, right?
There is. We're gonna address it as best we can. It's limited by the availability of right-of-way and the existing homes there, and we're gonna try to avoid having to purchase a lot of property to do it.
It's, it's dangerous. There's a lot of kids that, and mothers that walk all of that every morning and every afternoon, and that's my other concern, is I notice that there's twenty-two hundred daily trips coming from this project.
That's correct.
And we're at loss level E and F, I think, on that area?
At North Avenue.
So, how is that not gonna be affected?
The project has a significant impact at that intersection. They do have to mitigate. They're gonna have to widen the eastbound, I'm sorry, the easterly leg of the intersection, so it's westbound as you're coming up to Melrose on North Avenue from the train tracks.
Yeah.
They have to widen that stretch to provide additional capacity there, to provide an additional widening.
Which part of North Avenue?
On North Avenue coming west towards Melrose Drive.
From the tracks?
From the tracks.
They're gonna widen that?
That area of the road, it has to be widened to accommodate additional capacity at that intersection, and if you add that capacity into the model, it mitigates the operations of that intersection.
What about the parts of north that we're talking about?
So, that's in addition to that. They have to provide a fair share contribution to that roadway segment, but our, the staff's position on contributing to that is based on, you know, the amount of traffic that they're generating to the roadway. We don't really have the nexus to require them to do that full widening.
So, because one of the main entrances and exits is gonna be right there on North Avenue, right? There's two.
There's two entrances and exits. We anticipate that the majority of traffic from the project will go out the Melrose entrance and exit, and that there will be a percentage of traffic that uses North Avenue. The traffic analysis was prepared for the project, assumed eighty-twenty split, eighty percent Melrose, twenty percent North Avenue, on a daily basis.
Do you predict that there will be, at some point in the future, a need for a traffic light at that intersection? There's a school right there on the corner.
At North and Maryland?
Right.
That is a possibility. There's also a possibility for stop control there. It's something the city engineer, the traffic engineer, and the staff have discussed. At this point, there's not a, the traffic report hasn't identified the need for it. In other words, the traffic signal or the tra, the intersection there operates acceptably under the current standards. With the increase in traffic from this project, it was also analyzed, and, you know, because it's not stop-controlled or signalized now, it operates fairly freely. If there's students trying to cross there or additional traffic, that, that's an issue we'll have to address in the future.
My concern is, I, I drive this every day. My office is not far from there, actually, and I actually grew up as a teenager on North Avenue, so I'm very familiar with the area, and the growth that's associated with that area. I predict that the shortcut that many people will take to the seventy-eight will be through Maryland to either Highland or Olive, probably Highland, trying to avoid that intersection there at Melrose and North Avenue, because that's, that's a, that's a tough intersection, and it gives, we do get backed up there, and then you have the school, so I just, I, I think that there's gonna be a lot of issues in the future that the city's gonna have to deal with, so I just want to make sure we're gonna mitigate for, for that potential. I, I, and I'd rather not see a light there, so...
Well, at this point, we're not recommending a light. I mean, they are gonna have to contribute to that segment of north, and so we are gonna make, try to make an improvement in that area, which we feel is fairly critical as far as the short-cutting issue. It's just not something that's really shown up on our radar.
Might have to.
And the traffic analysis, you know, assumes sort of a standard distribution on the major arterials and some, you know, smaller traffic into the neighborhoods, but there wasn't a significant amount of traffic anticipated to use these smaller roadways.
Yeah, well, just, just what I see every day.
Councilman, can I address your concern regarding the mixed use?
Yes.
When we first got involved in this project fifteen months ago, we studied the economic feasibility of putting some sort of mixed-use component as part of the project. One of our largest challenges in this economic environment is finding the investment capital to build a project to this scale, eighty-plus million dollars. When we went out to the investment markets and discussed mixed-use plans on that site, what we heard was it brought risks to the site, and it, it, it greatly reduced the amount of investors that we could really present the site to. So, we thought the most economically feasible and the highest probability of being able to get a project started... to get a project started in the short run would not include a mixed-use component. And that was, you know, our reasoning, just increasing the risk level and, you know, the investment markets weren't, weren't very keen on the idea.
Okay. I can live with that. I just wanna make sure that we're getting what we need for the traffic, is, is my biggest concern, so I have to rely on staff on this.
Councilor Gronky, do you have questions of this applicant, or we still have speakers?
Of staff.
Of staff? Do you want to save him until we hear the speakers?
Sure.
Okay. Councilor Lopez, are you of the applicant?
One more question to him. When, when you have a housing, John, housing is less traffic than commercial. Yes or no?
Generally, housing generates less traffic on a daily basis than commercially used does, generally. There are exceptions.
Yeah. And, and then when you put mixed use there, then you create a different environment as far as, uh, it changes the, the laws and regulations, and you might not be able to, to do a lot like maybe you'd like to do in that area if you did a mixed use. That make sense to you?
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
Okay. If you put in mixed use in there with commercial, then it changes the whole, not only atmosphere there, but it changes your, your regulations in, in what you can put in there as far as, it changes your, your numbers in your roads and, and all, and does it do that?
There are diff, yeah, it would have different traffic impacts. It would be obviously subject to different building standards. It would be subject to different zoning and parking requirements, yes.
So we're fighting, we're fighting less traffic, so right now, that project would give you, as housing, less traffic by leaving it alone the way it is, correct?
Depending on the commercial use you put there.
No, if you only left commercial, uh, residential.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, yes, in general, residential generates less traffic than commercial.
That's why I said I like your project. Thank you.
Okay, and you, you'll wait till, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Allswead, followed by Chuck Rabel.
Thank you, Mayor. John Allswead, 138 Escondido Avenue, Civic Center Drive, excuse me. We're an adjacent property owner to this parcel on North Avenue. We own some industrial property there, and we've had the opportunity to look at their development and, with them, and we like it. We, we, you know, being in the apartment construction business, we're, we think that what they're doing absolutely needs to happen in a lot of communities. We need to revisit some of our zonings to, to create the traffic and the, the housing interface. So we are quite excited to see, see it happening, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Chuck Rabel, followed by Juan Abara.
My hat's off again to John and his staff and Zephyr Partners. This is a go. If you don't pass this, something's really wrong. I've, I've been pushing for housing for a long time, and I won't go into that, but it's been since the, the development, the apartments on Tibode, which was when, John?
2008.
2008? And, and that was an exception to your, your track record in, in putting housing into Vista. It's a no-brainer. Just do it. Thank you.
You'd be happy to know we have several projects in the plans for housing.
In plans? We've had plans forever.
Moving forward, okay, okay.
Tell me about the downtown demonstration block.
Okay, okay, okay.
Plans? Plans are meaningless. We, we've got a, we've got a developer with financing, ready to go. Make it happen.
Okay, Juan Abara, followed by, can I get my glasses on?
Good evening, Council. I just wanna make a quick comment. I'm actually a resident of Maryland, and I drive that every day, every morning, like John was saying. It's kind of funny, a couple days ago, I was teaching my niece how to drive, and we got to the intersection, and I said, this is the worst intersection anywhere, you know, and I'm like, you, this is like where you show someone how you need to be so defensively driving. I just wanna make sure that, and it's because the hill is there, and it's a narrow road, you know, I know they've lengthened it with Maryland Elementary, but it's still, it's the worst intersection that I've ever been to. I'm sure you guys have stats on how many accidents have been there, how many people have died there. I mean, I agree with Frank that making this a, a home residential would be less traffic than business use, and that's fine, but I, my point is just that I wanna make it a priority on the Vista residents' safety, that when the meeting comes to put in their fair share of land, that there's no shortcuts taken to protect just one person. Because, you know, right now it's an empty lot, and it's horribly unsafe. When they put in these thousands of people and all the traffics, I mean, I predict people are gonna get hurt, there's gonna be accidents there, and I'm sure the developers, you know, everybody, it's a cost issue, but when you guys are making that decision, I would hope that you put the highest priority on the public safety, regardless of whether they, you know, need to make that road 30 feet wide or whatever, because it is a horrible intersection. This is just gonna make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the end of our speakers, so Councilmember Gronky?
Well, let's stay on the North Drive safety issue. You've got an elementary school right across the street, you're gonna have a number of residents, they're gonna have children that are gonna attend that school. So what is the access, they come out of a gated community, is this gonna be gated at North Drive?
Yes, it will be gated at North Avenue.
Okay, and so then they come out of that, that area, and they get onto a sidewalk and go to the intersection at Maryland and North and cross at that in...
That's correct. Or, or they go around Melrose all the way down to the east there, to the intersection at North Avenue, and then go along North Avenue to Maryland.
Yeah, it'd be unlikely, but, okay, listen, they're going through there, and they, and they come across, and there's a stop sign at, I'm unfamiliar with the area. There's a stop sign at Maryland and North?
There's a stop sign at Maryland on the northbound approach to North Avenue. There's no stop on North Avenue going east to west.
Going east to west. Okay, so, and you'll definitely look into that.
That's gonna be something we're gonna have to address. We've talked internally about it. It's a serious safety concern, as well as the hump on North Avenue that the gentleman referred to, the site distance.
Yeah, yeah. That definitely has to go. So if, if I look at this, this map here, I'm seeing a sidewalk on the south side of North Avenue?
Correct.
And there will be a, a sidewalk on the north side of South, of North Avenue?
We are looking at that issue right now. There's not a lot of available right-of-way. There is going to be some widening in there to accommodate additional capacity at the intersection, and we're trying to consider where we can fit a sidewalk on the north side, or what kind of walkway we can fit.
Why don't, I would suggest, if I recall, on Vista Way, down by the corner of Foothill and, and Vista Way, we put in kind of a temporary asphalt. I would suggest we do that, so that we encourage the kids to stay off that drive.
Absolutely. We'll have some type of pedestrian walkway on the north side, regardless, it just may not be a full sidewalk.
Okay, fair enough. The other issue I have deals with access to transit. You're encouraging this, this project to be transit, to take advantage of the Melrose station there. Are you, are you doing that by providing a gated area in that northeast corner? How are you gonna put it?
Yes, actually, I'll go to the site plan here real quickly, and it's very difficult to see, maybe in the grading plan here. If you look on the screen, there is a access right here that would be a future access to the Sprinter station, that'll be on the north boundary, and there's, you know, a gate that would be there, and then, and CTD would have to make the improvements at the time that they build a southerly platform. They've indicated to us, they intend, within the next few years, to double-track this stretch of the track and put in a separate platform, so they'll provide the improved access to there at that time. In the interim, they have a sidewalk that'll go out to Melrose at the corner of the project, where the residents can take the shortest path to the Sprinter station.
Okay. The last question I have is, you know, you did a negative deck on this. Was there a lot of concern from the local community about this particular project?
We received no written comments from anyone other than state agencies and local agencies on the project.
And that deals with some of the riparian area there, or the stream bed?
Correct, and hazardous materials, the potential for those on the site, as well as cultural resources.
Does the applicant have to do any kind of mitigation or rehab to the, that basin, that stream basin?
That is under a separate permit, and so the current owner of the property is obligated to meet the Army Corps and Fish and Game requirements, so they're bonded to do that, and they have to still meet those performance standards.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Yes, okay, John?
So, the mitigation, will that, where will that go? For the, right to the Army Corps, or?
The mitigation that is currently in place falls on the green areas that are shown on the screen. And basically, that's the detention basin and the drainage in the northern portion of the site. It's the headwaters of the creek that runs down near Buckner Beach and Oceanside.
And that's part of that property that's owned by?
Lee's Iron, right there?
The entire portion of the green on this exhibit is all on the subject property.
Okay.
And that was all created when the site was mass-graded in 2001.
Oh.
So they're under permit obligations from that grading. This developer's gonna essentially stay out of that and grade the remainder of the site that's already been disturbed.
Okay, got it. So, what exactly are we approving here as far as, I mean, I'm not completely satisfied that we've got the intersection taken care of for, where the elementary school's at?
In terms of the intersection at Maryland and North, you mean?
Yeah.
That is not an issue that is resolved, I'll be very frank. We, we didn't wanna put the obligation of a stop sign on the applicant yet, because we don't know if that's gonna work. It's not that expensive of an improvement. It's essentially, you know, some striping and a sign that we can implement if we feel like we need to for safety reasons, but the city engineer wants to look at that, wants the projects in and see what kind of traffic issues we have. We also have to consider what improvements are gonna happen on north, directly east of that intersection, where we're gonna try to smooth the bump and create some pedestrian improvements. So the combination of that and the project traffic will change the condition out there, and we wanna evaluate what's best. If it does come up that we need a signal, you know, that it's gonna be difficult to do, we'll have to pay for it, but frankly, based on the distance from the intersection at Melrose, it's not likely that a signal would really work there.
That would be an ugly situation. So, will the CIP work that the city will be doing, will that be complete before this project is complete?
No. We're currently designing it. It's not fully funded. We probably have maybe half the funding at this point. We can talk about it when we update the CIP this year, which will come to the council probably in May, but we don't anticipate that's gonna happen, these, this project's on a much faster track.
On the north end, is that gated as well, or just the?
The north end is gated.
Both, both ends are gated?
Correct.
All right.
Councilmember Coles?
Well, I'm, I want to approve this project, because it's, it's, it's needed for our community, it's a good location. There are a few little quirks that I'm, you know, I have a sensitivity to that, the pathways to, to the school and, and the neighborhood. And I, I just wanted to, I, I know that you are saying that we won't be in line to do the improvements on the, the street and the pathways at the time of the completion of this, but are there some temporary measures that we could be assured of for safe routes to the school for children who may be coming to and from the, the complex?
We are gonna, like I said, evaluate it as best we can. I mean, short of telling you that we're gonna put a stop sign in right there...
Right, and, and I don't wanna hear that. I just wanna...
I'm just not sure what else we can do. There's not really, it's not a place for a mid-block crossing.
Right, right.
The intersection's a logical place for kids to cross. Kids are gonna come out of this project up North Avenue and wanna cross right at Maryland. I mean, it's just the shortest path, it's inevitable. Like I said, at the staff level, we're trying to figure out how to best address that issue, but the safety of the children from this project or any other area crossing that street to get to the schools are, you know, greatest concern.
Well, are there other speakers, or are we? Well, I, with that in mind, I, I don't wanna slow down the project, because, you know, we, we don't want to, they've worked hard, you've worked hard to get this to us at this point. I, I want it noted that I'm concerned, and I think others are as well, that we work on maybe a, a parallel route or a parallel effort to, to look at some solutions to the, to the pedestrian access along that area. But I would, that in mind, I'd, I'd move to close the public hearing and, and adopt Resolution 2012.
Just, I have one question. Would the safe routes to school be through Sandag? Would that, would there be a grant would be available to apply for, for that area, or is that?
There are grants available through Sandag. We actually applied for Safe Route to School grant for this particular route.
This particular one?
In the last round, and were rejected. So we're gonna reapply, and we are still working on it. I think what I can say is, we will bring the CIP forward in May. We do have some funding available. I definitely understand the council's concerns with respect to the safety issue in this area, and, you know, we'll look at what we can do with the available funding we have, whether it's an interim improvement or, you know, doing something in the interest of just trying to make sure that there's safe pedestrian routes, and we can present that to the council as part of the CIP presentation, and it's very possible that we can construct those before or at the same time this project's being built.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion, then, Mr. Lopez.
I was gonna second the motion, but that's all right. Hey, I'm almost sure that Mr. Connolly will be looking at this, that Maryland, Maryland and that north, what is it, North Drive it's called?
Yes, North Avenue.
Yeah, North Avenue, or it's called. When they start building that, you're gonna know, John, that the problems that you're gonna occur, that'll occur there. And it's just like when they built the basin, they built the basin out there, and, and as they built the basin, I, they, they realized there was other things that had to be done. And so those just came right in, and those, those things came in, they, they got them accomplished. When you look at what they've done with the basin over there, this staff, our staff, they know what they're doing, and I think they'll, they'll know what they're doing on this, and, and I have great confidence in you, Mr. Connolly, to make sure that those kids are safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Aguilera, did you have yourself up there?
Yeah, I do, so, how confident are you that this thing's, the, the CIP's gonna get pushed up? And, I mean, I mean, obviously, we oughta agree to it, but I am concerned. I drive this every day, then cars do not drive through there slowly.
I, yeah, I mean, I, I can't tell you that it's absolutely 100 percent going to get constructed before this project's built unless you put the burden of that responsibility on the project applicant.
Yeah. Mr. Connolly, what's the timeline for construction? We know they said the grading plan's starting in May...
We anticipate it right now, in our current schedule, we're probably about two years out, because it's unfunded, you know, it's not completely funded. We need to stockpile some money away, and we were gonna try...
No, in terms of this project going forward, is it?
Oh, this project is probably gonna be online, I'm guessing, end of next year.
End of 2013?
Yeah. We can ask Mr. Termini if...
Stated previously, we hope to start construction second quarter next year. We're looking at almost a two-year build-out of this project, 20 to 24 months of construction time. So that added on to, let's say, six months that we probably start, you know, we're looking two and a half years to this project being completed. I'd also like to point out, in addition to the CIP... Can you speak in that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'd also like to point out that in addition to the, the fair share agreement, you know, the project's also paying almost, is it just under $600,000 in traffic impact fees? Just as part of the regular process.
And is your project being phased in, so you're gonna have residences coming on board prior to the two and a half year completion date for the entire project?
Six months prior to the end of the project, start moving residents in, in the complete, into the completed buildings.
So in about two and a half years, you'll start to see people moving in?
Correct, and they'll, they'll stagger in over time.
That gives us a little more time.
Well, how about we include a condition that the city completes the pedestrian improvements on the north side of North Avenue prior to occupancy?
I can support it. I can support that.
We can, we can agree to that.
I mean, I, I, I love your project. It's well-designed, I think you listened to...
I mean, I, I love your project, it's well-designed, I think you listened to 90% of what we had to say about it, but, and I'm very much in support of, of building out housing, and, I mean, I think we need it, I just want to make sure that we do it the right way, so if we can include that, I'm on board.
And we couldn't agree with you further, I mean, the last thing's, our intent here is to build this and own it, and to manage it for the future, we're not just developing to sell a project, and the last thing we want to do is see a situation where kids are endangered crossing the street to go to school, so I think all of our interests are aligned in that respect, and?
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yeah.
I got everybody to speak again.
I'm sorry, I'd like to amend the motion to include Mr. Conley's proposal that we, whatever he said.
Okay, I'll, I'll second, I'll second whatever he said. So then we have, let's see, we have Councilmember Coles, are you, that's okay, and Frank, you want to say something again?
Yes, one more quick question, in your project, when you build your projects, do you build them and sell them, or do you build them and manage them and hang on to them?
Our intent is to build, manage, and hold on to this project.
Hold on to them? Okay, thank you.
With that, I don't see any more speakers, holy cow. Please cast your votes. Yay, motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your support.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is our oral communications, we have one speaker, Alejandro Sanchez. Is he gone?
Yeah.
I don't see him. Okay, he's gone. Okay, so that will go to remarks, start with, I guess we'll start with, Frank, start with you.
Nothing.
Yay, okay, next, Dave Coles.
Two quick things, one, I, I went to the ribbon cutting for Electra Bikes out in the Business Park last week, and it was a wonderful eye-opener to me to see that we have so many upscale businesses out there, this is the sixth biggest bike manufacturer marketer in the world, I mean, they're, they're a very big operation, they're not the competitive bikes that Councilman Gronky rides, but they're, they're the beach cruisers of a high-end scale. And, and then I attended the Sandag Safety Committee meeting last Friday, and we had a number of great presentations, we always do there, about some of the safety and criminal issues that face us and disasters that face us in the county, and one of the things that they just released or announced was the, a new app for your smartphone that will give you instant access and notification of, of anything, disasters, problems, occurrences that, that happen in the county that people should know about. So if you have this on your smartphone, you'll get a beep, or you get something and a little note about, there's a fire in Julian, or there's a traffic snarl up, it's, it's not completely up to speed yet, but you can put it on your, your smartphone now and begin to play with it. So, I also left these cards with the directions on how to put it on your phone out in the, in the lobby. That's it.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor, two things, one, is, Mr. Hamm here, or he's not here this evening, that's too bad, there's a business that's leaving Vista that I was concerned about, Jensen Meat, and I called Mr. Hamm about that, once I read about it in the paper, because we're losing about 140 jobs or something, it's a lot.
He's been planning that for a while.
Yeah, well, once I, I spoke to Mr. Hamm, I realized that there's really nothing that we could do.
We tried.
And what, what I would like to find out, well, not find out, but I would, yeah, I'd like to know what steps we could take to address the issue as to why we lost this business, because my understanding is we lost it because of the tax credits that these, this business is going to receive for hiring employees in an enterprise zone, and also the equipment purchases that they're going to make in that enterprise, they get tax credits, I mean, they're basically moving because they're going to get about eight and a half million dollars in tax credits. We as a city cannot compete with that, but we're competing against Chula Vista in this case, and other enterprise zones here in California, there needs to be some sort of rules that we can only allow new businesses from out of state, or from, you know, from out of the area to, to actually qualify for these tax credits, otherwise, we're just cannibalizing ourselves, and, you know, we as a city, we can't, we can't offer them eight and a half million dollars to stay here, so I don't know if we talk to our assembly people about that, or?
We can certainly do that, but you're correct, there, cities are stealing from one another, basically, and we're not bringing in new businesses from out of state, is which was the intent originally of the enterprise zones.
Yeah, just doesn't seem like it was completely thought out. And then second, I would like to thank the two councilmen for their service, Mr. Gronky and Mr. Lopez, you both served your community, and you should be not only honored for, for doing that, but well-respected for doing that, I know there's times when we have not seen eye to eye on various subjects, but at the same time, these, both these gentlemen have served their community, and it's not an easy thing to do, so thank you for your service, and in addition to that, I would like to welcome the new council members, potential council members, it hasn't been certified yet, but congratulate the two that are here, I think, Cliff, oh, he's back there too, congratulations on a well-run campaign for the three of you, and I guess we'll know by the end of the month who's actually in, but congratulations to the three of you, thank you.
And Amanda, too.
Can I back up for just a, I forgot, you know, I had that on my notes, and I got so busy passing on my cards, I forgot to welcome our candidates, all that ran, you know, it's, it's always a, an embellishment for our city to have a campaign, because it does bring to the public's attention the issues facing our city, and, and the three of you who are here ran a great campaign, Cody, I think you're untouchable now, you're pretty far out, and Amanda and Cliff, good luck on these final days as you bite your nails waiting for each, they only count like 10,000 votes a day, so it makes it tough to know how it goes, and that in mind, Frank, I've enjoyed sitting next to you, and Steve, I enjoyed giving you permission in your first days to run for council, when I still had the authority to do that, and you've done a good job for the city, and thank you both for your service, you both love this city, and regardless of other issues that have come up over the years, I've always felt that you had the best interest of Vista in mind, and, and, and will continue to do so. Thank you.
I absolutely agree, and they can be proud of the accomplishments that they've done over the last, you, 12 years, right, and, and Frank, the eight years, so, you can be very proud of what you've done for our city, so, and also, welcome to the new council members when we decide who they are, but welcome, you did all run a great campaign, and so I congratulate you all. So with that, I got to go pass it to Patrick Johnson, my city manager, don't want to forget him.
Just a few comments, we will not have a meeting on November 27th, so this will be the last full meeting of the city council, and I too want to echo those comments, thank you to Councilman Gronky and Councilmember Lopez for their service, it's been a pleasure working with you. On December 4th, we'll have a swearing-in, swearing-out ceremony for the existing council members and the new council members, and so that'll likely take place at 5:00 or 5:30, time hasn't been set yet, but just to provide that to you. And just two items, wanted to let you know, the downtown tree lighting at the gazebo on Main Street is going to take place on Friday, November 30th at 5:30 PM, and the Christmas Parade is on Saturday, December 1st at 1:00 PM, and this year, our HMLA 369, which is our Marine Corps unit that we sponsor, were their home this year, but they're going to be deployed again in 2013, and so we're going to have the tree ornaments on the tree, that'll be in the lobby, close to Thanksgiving, and there'll be gift tags that you can come and take and provide a gift for the kids, and so it was very successful last year, so we encourage the community to do that once again, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
And, and actually, HMLA, the, the people that don't have a place to go for Thanksgiving are going to American Legion here in Vista, they're serving, so I'll be serving them Thanksgiving dinner, Thanksgiving afternoon, so, with that, oh, sorry, Darryl?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to express my appreciation to our outgoing council members, it's been a pleasure working with both of you over the last several years, and I want to wish you both the very best, it's, it's been a great council, and you have helped me at all times, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the city and, and for me personally, and I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
With that, we are adjourned. At 7:52.